Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'd like to welcome you all to the February 10th, 2022 special meeting public work session of the Portsmouth City School Board. I now call this meeting to order and ask that you please stand now for a brief moment of silence. As we remain standing, we'll be led in a place of allegiance by Board Member Vernon Tillage.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seated. We're now be led in our mission statement, Agenda Item 2.4 by Board Member Tillage.
Bear with me. Okay. Here we go. The mission of the Portsmouth Public School Division is to engage all students in learning that will foster academic excellence and responsible citizenship.
Thank you so much, sir. Agenda Item 2.5, attendance, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Here.
Dr. Cotton?
Here.
Mrs. Hines?
Here.
Mrs. Schumake?
President.
Mrs. Thomas?
Here.
Mr. Tillage?
Here.
Dr. Whitaker?
Here.
Dr. Patillo?
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you so much. Agenda Item 2.6, our intent on motion at this time for consideration of the agenda for February 10th, 2022.
Motion for approval, second.
Motion made by Board Member Schumake, second by Vice Chair Atkinson, discussion, Ms. Hines.
Yes, I'd like to consider adding a point to this agenda to allow Dr. Bracy to make any policy shifts depending on how the vote goes in Richmond regarding the mask mandate.
For him to make a...
For him to be able to...
Change policy tonight.
Keep up with the law so that we are lawfully on the right side of things, for us to have a mask mandate, we had to vote it in, if there's any way possible to give him the leeway for him to be following the law and the guidelines that are given until we can meet back again. I would like to make that motion to give him that autonomy or authority now.
That's a great suggestion, but we're going to actually get some advice from our attorney based on what's happening legally with that, and then we'll add that point neatly after our discussion.
Okay. Thank you. Yep.
We do have a motion and a second on the floor for 2.6. Is any other discussion? Roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Dr. Cotton?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Ms. Schumake?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Tillage?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you so much. We're now have Agenda Item 2.7. I ask that our Vice Chair move us into closed meeting at this time.
I move that the board enter into a closed meeting under the provisions of Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia for the following purposes: consultation with legal counsel concerning a legal matter requiring the advice by such counsel as permitted under Subsection A.8, and consideration of various personnel matters including the assignment, performance, and resignation of specific school employees as permitted under Subsection A.1.
Second.
Motion made a second by Ms. Hines. Any other discussion? Stand down, roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Dr. Cotton?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mrs. Schumake?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Tillage?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Dr. Patillo? Yes. Thank you so much. We're now moving to closed meeting. Roll call vote, Vice Chair Atkinson?
Yes.
Ms. Schumake?
Yes.
Dr. Cotton?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Tillage?
Yes.
Ms. Hines?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Nannanus?
Hello.
Want to thank everybody for your patience.
Oh, you did? Uh-uh.
That brings us to Agenda Item 2.8. It's a roll call vote, consideration of the appointment of the interim school board member to serve from February 11th, 2022 until December 31st, 2022. Our intent on motion and name at this time.
I move that the board consider appoint Pacella Williams as interim school board member to serve from February 11th, 2022 until December 31st, 2022.
Second.
Motion is made by Vice Chair Atkinson, second by Mr. Tillage. Ms. Hines, discussion.
Yes, I just want to thank all those people that put their name in the hat to come and to be a part of this board and doing the work that we do, you know, whether it's in front of the scenes or behind the scenes, I want to thank all those that put their name in the hat to be willing to come in and roll up their sleeves and do that with us. And while we are doing this appointment now, there still is an election season that you can go. If this is really your calling to do, I would encourage anybody who really wanted to do it to come and to get their election stuff in and do it that way. So I just want to say thank you to those that put their name in the hat.
Thank you so much for that statement. Any other discussion? Stand down, roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Dr. Cotton?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
No.
Mrs. Schumake?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Tillage?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Dr. Patillo?
Yes.
Seven yes votes, one no, it passes.
Thank you so much. And Ms. Chamberlain, will you reach out to Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Thank you so much. Agenda Item 3.1 is recognition for VSBAs School Board Clerk Appreciation Week. And we have certificates here on behalf of the Virginia School Board Association that reads 2022 VSBAs School Board Clerk Appreciation Week, February 14th through the 18th, 2022. Ms. Kathy Chamberlain, and it's signed by Teddy Martin II, VSBAs President, and Gina Patterson, Executive Director. Now, I just want to thank you all on behalf of myself and the board for the tireless work that you all do for us day in and day out. I know it's hard to chase us down and reply to emails and to check out messages and for me to sign documents. So I just thank you all for putting up with me and all you do for the board, and we thank you for all that you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for the arrangement.
Oh, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Hey, Lauren, you didn't get a quick picture of Ms. Atkinson giving certificates to Ms. Chamberlain and Ms. Stewart? While I do now, also want to thank Susan. She oftentimes fills in the gap when we need her to. So thank you for that.
Thank you for the arrangement.
Agenda Item 3.2, what y'all been waiting for, the report from the superintendent on his estimated needs for the upcoming budget year. So I've now turn it over to Dr. Bracy.
Thank you, Dr. Patillo. Vice Chair Atkinson, members of the board, tonight is my honor to be able to present for your consideration my estimate of needs for the 2022-23 school year. I want to first thank our Chief Financial Officer, Mr. Theo Falk, and his team for all their dedicated efforts in putting this budget proposal together. And at this time, I will turn the presentation over to Mr. Falk and share with you the important details. But before he gets started, I want to personally thank you all. He and I both thank you for your flexibility in pushing everything back a week, gave us a chance to firm up these numbers so that we could have some exact figures for you. So thank you very much for your flexibility.
All right. Good evening, Chairman, Dr. Patillo, Vice Chair, Ms. Atkinson, members of the school board. I'm proud to be here tonight to present to you the Cion along with Dr. Bracy. Each year, we try to give you a snapshot of what the funds look like from a percentage perspective, as well as to give the public understanding of what funds are included in our budget. Obviously, in the middle, the general fund is the heart of our budget, which shapes the balance between revenue and expenditures involved in our day-to-day activities and the operations of schools. As you can see, this is the largest part of this proposal at 76%. Our next largest fund is the grants fund, which consists of federal, state, and local grant funding that's used for specific purposes as mandated by the grant. For example, this fund includes our Title I grants, special education, as well as vocational education grants that support students in numerous ways. The next largest fund here is our risk management fund. That provides coverage for all of the expenditures related to our self-insurance health plan, as well as insurance premiums for property casualty, and also workers' compensation claims. That is 9% of our total funding. Next, at 4% is the cafeteria fund. That is an enterprise fund, which means it's a separate account designated to accept fees for a particular service, in this case, our food services program. And then lastly, at 1% of our budget is our textbook fund, which it does what it implies. It is where we spend funds to purchase textbooks and other instructional materials for our schools. Next slide. The total of all of our funds in this budget is a total of $239.5 million. You see the fund sources here from the general fund on down to the grants fund. For the rest of the presentation, we'll address the general fund only, as it pays for the operations for the schools and it's where all of our flexibility lies. But we thought it important that the board and the public look at all the funds that we have under our perusal through this process. Keep in mind, as you look at the grants fund there, you have $23.5 million. That number is our recurring number. It doesn't include the large amount of American Rescue Plan Act funds, as well as some other pandemic funds that we have. We wanted to make sure that everything was apples in that comparison. But we discussed many of those funds last week. Just wanted to make sure that you understood that's not in that $23.5 million, because those funds go over several years. And we just wanted to make sure that that was well-known. That's just our recurring grants that we get every year, Title I, special ed, vocational education, adult ed, and other grants. Next slide. So our proposed operating budget for this year, if you look at it, it's going to be $181.9 million, and that's about $13.8 million above this current year's budget of $168.1 million. This proposal includes many initiatives that were identified by the school board, staff, and community as priorities. Those priorities, in this case, are overall employee salary increase and funding to support several of our heartiest staff positions. As always, this budget focuses on enhancing student achievement and continued focus on student support as we continue to address the needs of our student body and our community as a whole. We also want to make sure that technology resources are readily available and aligned with our current technology standards. And then also, we've included funds to continue to enhance instructional programs and the delivery of instruction. Later in this presentation, Dr. Bracy will walk through those specific additions that we made to this budget. And then those initiatives will allow us to address the priorities that were made clear by our stakeholders. So in short, this budget, as we always present, is a budget of need. It's a conservative budget of need. The School Division always has to upgrade and make additions in other areas to ensure that our students receive quality educational experiences that they so richly deserve. We'll get to the specifics of those recommendations in a minute, but let's take a look at our current funding and revenue situation. As you will note from this slide, the largest portion of our funding, about 55%, comes from the state. That number totals roughly about $102 million, the state funds, and then an additional 19.1 with state sales tax, which is another 10% of that funding. The primary determinant of that funding is our student enrollment. So right now, we're looking at our budget this year has a student enrollment of 12,794 students. Next year is projected to go down slightly by 23 students, 12,771 students. We have to closely monitor that number, because obviously, any decreases in that number or increases in a positive light would affect the amount of revenue we receive. So we look at that revenue, those ADM numbers daily, our enrollment numbers daily, to make sure that we're getting all of the revenue and that we projected the revenue that would come in from the state. So our revenue outlook for '22-'23, as I said, it is projected to go up about $14 million from the state. Why is that? Well, first, they increased at-risk funding for students who are determined to be educationally at risk, at a total of about $6.7 million of an increase. That's based on the number of free reduced lunch percentages in the school, participant, excuse me, in the school division. Secondly, state funding for the state share for 5% raise for SOQ positions only, beginning on July 1st, 2022, that amounted to about $3.4 million in the increases. We also have an increase in basic aid, standard of quality funding due to the re-benchmarking process of about $2.5 million. In addition, the state is projecting that we're going to have an increase in our sales tax of approximately $2.2 million. That I want to caution, because we know what the economy is doing right now. We have inflationary factors, we have supply chain shortages, many areas of our economy look like they're not going in the way that we want it to go in. They give us this estimate, but we have to make sure that we track it during the year to make sure that that estimate that's being done now is in line with what's going on currently from an economic perspective. So I just want to caution you there, while it may be a $2.2 million increase in the projection, based on what the economy is doing, is how those sales tax dollars will come in to us. Lastly, in the state side, since this was a re-benchmarking year, which means they recalculate all of the bases that they handle for the budget, the re-benchmarking use FY 2020 and FY 2021 costs. Well, as we know, they were pandemic years, so a lot of the expenditures that were in those particular estimates were lower than what they would have been had school been in session and there was no pandemic. So the state decided to hold School Division harmless for those decreases, and they put in another $2.8 million in our budget to make up for what re-benchmarking would have been had we had a regular school year. So that's state funding. Local funding, let's move to local funding. In this budget, we have not asked for an increase from the city and from their local funding for next year. So that number remains at $59.9 million, which is the same number for this year. And estimates in your federal funds and your other funds stay fairly the same based on funds that we're receiving from federal and other sources. And with that, I want to turn it over to Dr. Bracy so he can explain where we're investing our funds this year.
Thank you, Mr. Falk. In many ways, my estimate of needs this year is really simple. While there's a lot of ongoing maintenance and instructional needs of the School Division that have to be addressed, I have one budget priority coming into our planning sessions, and that was our staff. We all know that this year has been a trying year in education, and it's coming on the heels of more trying years before that. The pandemic has only served to highlight the ongoing stresses and needs in today's classrooms and lean more on the demands we make of teachers, staff, each and every day. Compensation in comparison to the growing salaries of the private sector is making education a more difficult path for our employees to come to. Next slide. In fact, I'd like to read you a portion of a column posted just this week by the LA Times by L. Z. Grandison. He writes, "Between 2006 and 2019, the number of education degrees dropped by 22% while our population continued to grow. Now, COVID safety concerns are causing even more people to second-guess the profession, with the Bureau of Labor Statistics saying there are 567,000 fewer educators in our public schools today than before the pandemic. A recent poll commissioned by the NEA found 55% of educators looking to leave the profession earlier than planned. Those are some daunting statistics and ones that we don't want to see further localized here in Portman Public Schools." That's why I'm recommending a full 5% raise for all PPS employees for the '22-'23 school year. As you may have read, the governor's proposed biennium included a 5% raise, but that's only for SOQ positions. We know that every staff member in PPS has worked tirelessly and deserved to have their efforts recognized and acknowledged in their salary. As such, we're including this raise for all staff at a total cost to the division of $6.8 million. In addition, as a board, you know, we also must remain competitive in the hiring process when it comes to retention of support staff members, including our bus drivers, bus monitors, and school nurses. We've struggled throughout the past year as we have worked through vacancies in these positions. That is why tonight I'm proposing pay increases for these roles. To begin, our school bus drivers currently have a starting pay of $13.83 an hour. My proposal is to increase that starting pay to $16.60 per hour, which will be a total cost of $521,000. For school bus monitors, starting pay is $11 an hour. My proposal is to increase the starting pay to $13.20 an hour, which will be a total cost of $144,000 to our budget. Similarly, we have worked throughout the years to improve school nurse pay. Today, the starting salary for an RN working as a school nurse is $33,308. My proposal tonight is to increase that starting salary to $39,969. This change applied to all RNs on staff would be a total cost of $147,000. While talking about staffing, a key area of need that has arisen over the past year has been in regards to our athletic trainers. And some of you probably familiar with that, because we've had phone calls in that regards. So as you know, we've contracted this service out in years past. However, the vendor has struggled to find qualified candidates interested in these positions, as other divisions and organizations hire them directly, complete with benefit package. So tonight, I'm recommending the hiring of four athletic trainers to support our student athletes and sports programs, and thereby decrease our dependence on the contracted services. This will be a total cost of $375,000. So what this will do, it actually, we will still use our contracted services, but this will help us not to have to depend solely on them. One final staff note, it is my recommendation tonight that we create a permanent substitute pool of 25 permanent subs who will work for the division. With this pool, administration will be able to strategically place a permanent substitute in schools based on the school and/or division needs at the time. This was something that was mentioned briefly in our finance committee meeting, and in following up with Chair Patillo and Ms. Thomas, who serves on this, on the finance committee. You know, I wanted to make sure when we looked at the budget, we were able to do it, followed up with the chair, and say, I think we can get this in. So I appreciate you bringing that proposal, because that is something that we've thought about in years past, even identifying a particular school and having a dedicated sub for each school. But the thing we all struggle with, with our senior staff, is that that person will get there and be used in a different role. So in doing so, what we will do, we will have this person, these people, banked in the HR department, and they will deploy them where we see the need fit. Staff and specialists can work directly with the schools, and they know exactly where they would need to be placed. This budget also includes other recommended budget initiatives that we will consider critical to the operation of our School Division. Many of these initiatives are continuations of programs that we participate in, and some are new initiatives based on changes in our current operations. Additional support of student hardware and software and classroom technology to ensure that our students and staff have access to current technology resources to enhance and making the learning environment more engaging. This includes continued maintenance of purchase of Chromebooks, the purchase of additional laptop carts for classroom use, replacement of classroom projection systems, and other technology initiatives. Continuation of the support and expansion of dual enrollment, first college, early college programs in collaboration with TCC. Increases in amounts allocated to keep up with the rising cost of providing services to our special ed students who attend our regional CSEL program. Funding to support professional development so staff members continue to be well-trained and familiar with the latest educational strategies to foster student success. As social, emotional learning, and mental health are a priority for the school board and community as a whole, we've included funds that will allow us to procure contractors that can provide services to support our student body. We determined that contracted services may be the best route to take, since we will need to identify those needs that are most critical and tailor those services and solutions to those needs. Additional funding to support our facilities, maintenance programs related to equipment and contracted services. This will ensure that our facilities operate efficiently and effectively, and that our maintenance programs are in line with our current industry standards. As we see in our everyday lives, the cost of fuel and energy is on the rise, therefore we have included additional funds to keep up with inflationary factors that affect those costs. An increase in the general fund transfers to other funds to cover increases in risk management and expenditures. That concludes my presentation tonight. As always, I thank you for your consideration of this budget proposal. It is my deep belief that what I have outlined for you in tonight's presentation is in the best interest of our entire School Division, our students, staff members, parents, and families. As I look at these faces on the screen, again, I'm encouraged by the incredible work that is taking place in our schools and classrooms, and I'm reminded how our sound and strategic investments today will help us continue to shine brighter in the years to come. I'm happy to take any questions that you all may have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Bracy, I want to thank you and Mr. Falk and the team for pulling this budget together, this estimate of needs together. I also want to thank all school board members, because you all listen to constituents, you listen, and you read emails from staff, and you brought all those things back to the table in order for them to put these things in the budget. So I really want to thank you all for the service you give to the community and to your constituents and staff as well. Before we entertain questions, I just want to say I'm pleased with the budget. I believe we took the needs that we've been hearing for the past year in reference to salary increases, and just, I went and checked back in my notes, this is the first time since prior to 2001 that City Council is not being asked for additional funding to fill the needs of the School Division. And that should be celebrated on my staff as well. Also, this is the largest single salary increase, 5% that we've given since before 2001 as well. So over the past 20 years, there hasn't been an increase this size. And we dug a little deeper to meet the needs of our bus drivers and our monitors and our nurses. So I'm pleased to say that with the proposed increase approved by the board, that will move us from the bottom of the pile for bus drivers and put us right in the middle, right below the top. So I'm thankful for that and also for school nurses. Again, that's a tribute to the work of our staff and to you, the board, for listening and taking those things into consideration. I saw the mental health needs that were addressed, that Ms. Schumake and Dr. Whitaker gave off the board time and time again in reference to make sure we had resources in place to meet the mental health needs of our students and staff as well. That's in the budget. And during my tours with the teacher work groups, and we talked about it in the finance meeting, having a load of 25 long-term substitutes readily available that can fill the spaces and needs in our schools, that will alleviate many of the issues of people not having their planning time, that will alleviate the issues of oversized classrooms, to where now, we won't have to have our IAs covering classes or teachers having classes of more than 30 students, because you can now fill those spaces. And we have issues now. We have people coming fresh out of college who are very gifted, very talented, but have yet to pass the practice and get their certification. They now have an opportunity to showcase their skills and their gifts and their abilities while being paid on staff and filling these voids as well. So I just want to thank Dr. Bracy and his team for the budget, and I now open this for any questions and extra considerations from other board members. Vice Chair Atkinson, Ms. Hines, and then Ms. Schumake.
Thank you, Chair. I echo the same sentiments as Chair Patillo. Great job on the budget, Dr. Bracy, team, Mr. Falk. Happy to see a lot of staff had to consideration for this. Just one quick question, the funding to support the mental health, is that going to be contracted? Are we going to send out a RFP for that? Or is that going to be direct hire to the school?
That's going to be contracted out. We're not hiring them. There won't be PPS employees, yeah.
So a RFP will be sent out for those services?
I guess it depends on the magnitude of it. So if we're looking at a large scale, it will be RFP related.
And that was one question I was looking at because I know when I was looking at the governor's budget, a lot of it's probably paid from the risk funds that we're receiving and those not guaranteed to be the same next year.
Right.
So they couldn't be permanent employees, but we could, we contract for those.
The interesting thing about this budget is what happens next year?
Right.
And really what happens this year because we have a proposal on the table, but we really don't know if that proposal is going to be the same at the end of the general assembly session. And so that, that's kind of some of the, the angst that we have because we're really trying to make sure that we comply with what's there now, but also have flexibility if you need to pivot and shift going forward if something changes.
So do you, Mr. Falk, do you project those services possibly would be over 100K or we're going to be somewhere below that?
It really depends on what, what staff decides that they want to go after as we start talking about the real needs and what we really need with our students. I, I think that'll make the determination of what the magnitude would be with those services contracted out.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Mr. Falk, Dr. Bracy, thank you. I think the, the 5% increase is wonderful, but going back to that 2001 date, when we did that pay increase in 2001, I was an employee here and that was a part of a paying compensation study. And seeing that we haven't had a sizable increase in that time, I think it's time that we start discussing as a board, with us as a board, but also too with city council is setting up for a paying compensation plan for our staff, understanding that that does come with some monetary commitment from city council to make sure that we are able to provide that level of pay for our staff going through because there's nothing, there's nothing worse than to do a paying compensation study and people knowing what they should be making versus what it is that we're paying and we can't do anything about it. But in 20 years, we haven't done a paying compensation study. And so I think for as long as most of us have been on this board together, we've been, we've been doing our best to piecemeal raises for our, our staff and I think we've done a very good job of it, but I think we also need to, to make the step and to start having those hard conversations about a paying compensation study for our staff to get them back on level with where everybody else is within the division. And so while 5% is wonderful and while I have no problem supporting a 5%, I would also like to start having that conversation about the next step that goes along with that. The second piece to that question, I was going to piggyback off of what Vice Chair Atkinson said was the contracting for these SEL services, are there contractors out there for these services?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And it's easier, it's easier for us to contract out than to try to hire someone ourselves.
Okay. Okay. Sounds great. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Ms. Schumake.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Chair Patillo. And I also echo, thank you so much, Dr. Bracy and Mr. Falk for all of your hard work. Being that we are not asking any additional funds from council, I know the meeting that we had a couple of weeks ago with yourself, Dr. Bracy, Mr. Falk, Board Member Hines and myself, it was said that if we were able to not ask for any additional funds, maybe the funds that we would have asked of city council could go into our CIP fund for our school. So I would like to make sure that, you know, we have another meeting with them to kind of let them know, hey, look, as of right now, because of course, we don't know what general assembly is going to do, but as of right now, we are not requesting any additional funds. Can we talk about placing the funds that we probably would have requested into our CIP fund so that we can restart that conversation of building our school? So just wanted to put that out there so that we can have that on the table when we meet with them again.
Ms. Thomas.
I echo what everyone else says. Thank you, Dr. Bracy, Mr. Falk, for the time it took for you to listen to all the concerns and also put together a really comprehensive budget. I do have one question about, you know, a topic that we've discussed a lot, which is the school nurses and I saw the rate, the increase in pay from $33,000 to $39,000. Where does that put us overall in terms of salary for school nurses among the region? Does it make us competitive or will we still have an issue kind of filling that position, those positions with that pay?
It puts us in a much better position than we're in now. There's still, there's still work that needs to be done with that, but I think this was a, a great leap in terms of what we, what we've done and have budgeted for in past years. You know, this has sort of been a three-year prong to get to where we are now with the percentages that we were looking at of like three years of 7%. Well, in order to do what we did tonight, you know, being in the last year, we, we, we had to go above that 7% to at least not be last in the region.
Okay.
So we're not last anymore unless someone else does something in their addition to the 5% that they may give. And we took that into consideration that all school divisions are going to give a 5%. So we started there and then we built from there to try to make sure that we're not, we're not last.
Okay. All right. All right. Thank you.
And to that point, we, we were on the three-year plan with the nurses, but that doesn't mean that we stop building from this point.
It's a continuous.
It's a continuing process. And, and that's with all staff until we can finally get our teachers at least, our teachers and staff to where they should be, at least on an average nationwide.
Okay.
I think it was Dr. Whitaker and then Ms. Hines.
I also want to thank Dr. Bracy and Mr. Falk for the well-put-together budget. I have a question about the state funding. So if the state funding doesn't hold, are we, so are we, are we going to ask for an increase from the city to fund the priorities?
It depends on how much it would come down, Dr. Whitaker. I wouldn't, right now, I think we have enough flexibility if nothing drastic happens where we probably wouldn't have to go back to the city for, for an increase. But again, obviously, it depends on what happens in the general assembly. And then also obviously looking at our enrollment as well. Our enrollment is kind of very neck and neck with our ADM projection for this year. And if that comes to play the next year, we may be looking at an ADM change as well. So we're, we're kind of taking all that into the consideration as we go through. Until we really know what the general assembly is going to do, I really couldn't tell you yes or no, but I think we're pretty safe with this budget that we wouldn't have to go back and ask for additional funds.
But I guess my concern is that what was presented are things that we really need. So I would hate to see anything get cut out because we're not willing to ask for an increase on the city's part.
So I guess the, the short answer to your question is if we see that type of drastic change as we move forward closer to, to May, when they approve the budget, yeah, that option will, will still be there. You know, we will reach out to them and express the importance of, of funding the budget that we presented tonight. And we have a joint meeting scheduled for the 22nd. So that's something that we can share at that time too. Currently at this state, if it's the same in two weeks or so from now, that this budget, if this budget holds, we're fine. If not, then we may have to come back to you at a later time.
Thank you.
And I just want to add to that conversation before I call Ms. Hines. We, we have an extremely talented and gifted CFO. And I, I feel completely comfortable and safe with his projections and, you know, he's not a speed racer.
He's methodical.
He don't always move as fast as you want, but he's very methodical in his thinking. And when he prepares a budget, he prepares it with expectations of what ifs could happen. So I just want to throw that out there because you do an extremely great job. You're great at what you do and I know you're in the background, so not often recognized, but none of this would be possible without the work that she's doing and the work your staff does. And I know this way that she do, I just want to thank you publicly for that.
Does any, I mean, this is my second round of questions. I don't want to take away from somebody who hasn't asked questions first.
We know how you roll, Ms. Hines.
Okay. For the, like the, the, for the hard-to-staff positions, the increases that we're making for our bus drivers and our monitors, those that are existing, will they get the same bump? So I'm looking at this as like a 280 increase in minimum pay from 1380 to 1660. So we may have veteran teacher, I mean, veteran bus drivers that are sitting maybe at 1650 that may, somebody could surpass them as a new hire, making more money. So if we're going to incentivize hard-to-staff positions, are we making that $2.80 roughly, I'm not a math teacher, jump for all of our staff to increase their pay as well? Because increasing beginning salary is one thing, but we have to make sure that we're keeping our veterans. So I want to make sure that they're getting a bump as well, the same, you know, because when we talked about the, the raising of the minimum wage for everybody, not everybody is going to get that bump. But I want to make sure, because these are hard-to-staff positions and I want to make sure that we're giving that bump to everybody in that manner.
Yeah, that increase is going to flow through the scale.
Okay.
So the top increases will flow all the way through every step in the scale. So everybody would get that same level of a bump.
Okay.
For, for all of these bus drivers, bus monitors, as well as their RNs.
Okay. And the second question, and it really should go to operations and technology, but with the money that we have in ARPA funds and the money that we've put into here, when we talk about increases in energy and fuel costs, have we looked at turning over our lights to LEDs? And have we started looking at maybe having a couple of schools go on solar, you know, and kind of setting that bar for the decrease in use of fuel? Because even if we get two or three schools that are on solar power and we switch over our LED lights, our LED lights now have a 20-year lifespan. So you're really decreasing over time the amount of money that we're spending on energy. So if we can look at using some of these ARPA funds as we upgrade our, our facilities, making some of the upgrades that will pay, I'm going to say pay us back because we're not having to change out things every two or three years, I think that would benefit us, but that's more for the operations and technology subcommittee. But I just wanted to put that out there as well because the energy and fuel is going to go through the roof before it comes back down, if it comes back down.
Yeah, they've already started replacing many of the lights with LED lights already.
Even on the inside of the buildings?
On the inside and some of the parking lots and stuff as well. And also they're, they are paying attention and focusing on possible energy-saving methods that we can use within the school division as well. So they actually, they actually started that prior pandemic as far as with looking at LED lights and things of that sort. So they've actually been ahead of the game on that, so they are looking at those things.
But some of our, some of our schools have some great fields that we could use for some solar panels and some solar farms, as they call them. So I'd just like to see us maybe look at that.
And with, with Mr. Tillis being on our legislative committee, he's very in tune with, with energy and energy bills that are coming through Richmond as well. So I'm hoping he can help us on that as well. Mr. Tillis?
Yeah, so I thank Dr. Bracy and your staff for this very good budget. I think it's definitely hitting in the right direction. To piggyback on a couple of things that some of the other board members had mentioned, one, starting with the green, cost-effective energy efficiency. I think that moving forward, I think, you know, if we can find ways to, one, do solar, to do hydroelectric, wind energy, many of our, as she mentioned, many of our fields are perfect condition for that to help to, one, bring, bring cost savings to our school division, but also incorporate that learning into our students that can be taught into career development, career technology courses where our kids are learning about the cost efficiency of it, but also learning about the scientific side of it as far as the production of energy. In regards to the, the substitutes, we've mentioned the permanent substitute teachers, 25. What is the current pay for a substitute teacher?
For this one that we're proposing, this is $125 a day.
Be long-term.
Yeah, these are long-term.
Okay. So that was, that's more than the regular substitute.
Right.
Okay. And I think that was my final question because most everybody else already asked my same question, so.
All right. If there are no budget questions, I did want to kind of, kind of put them on the spot a little bit, but the, the 5% salary increase would be for the start of the next fiscal year, July 1, and that does not include the staff bonuses that we're looking at, the issuing staff as well. I, I'm not sure if they have an exact amount of what the bonuses would be, but I do know a date that we're looking toward having the bonuses issued out would be for.
Yes, and we talked about that and I was, I was going to wait and let all these questions. I was trying to get it in before, before, before you ask about it.
I knew, I knew they were coming.
I lost my money was on Ms. Hines would ask the question.
I was trying to get the budget done first.
But we, we've looked at that. We, we've been talking about that and since, of course, since the last meeting that we had when we discussed it as well. So we're, we're looking at trying to issue something to our staff probably sometime before the, the spring break. You know, that's, that's what we're looking at. We're also, I've also been in conversations with, with the other superintendents in the region and we're all looking around the same timeframe with it. Now, we don't know the amount yet. There's still a lot of factors that, that are in play with that. We've got to wait and see, as Mr. Falk mentioned earlier, about how steady our enrollment is with the ADM to determine how much we're able to, to give. We also have to monitor, we're looking at another couple of months of the payroll expenditures because that will help us give a, give us a better idea of unexpendable funds for this school year. And then that way we'll have a better number of what the actual bonus will be. So we're, we're optimistic that we're going to be able to do something. We just can't tell you how much, but we can tell you about when it will come.
All right. Were there any other questions in reference to the superintendent's estimate of needs?
Do we know if the, how much the tuitions are going up for TCC and for CSEL?
No.
We just know they're going.
We don't have numbers just yet.
I didn't know if they had their numbers. Okay.
All right. So there, there are no other questions for that? Agenda item 3.3 is agenda review February 24, 2022. The agenda is already in board docs. And if you have any additions for the agenda or any questions about it, please submit those to Dr. Bracy and myself at your earliest convenience. That's for February the 24th. Agenda item 3.4, subcommittee reports. Budget finance, you pretty much got our report. City council liaisons, I know you all mentioned wanting to set up another meeting to discuss CIP and other board strategies for that. So I guess you all will let us know when that next meeting will be.
Probably after the meeting that we have on the 22nd.
Oh, perfect. Okay. Do we have any other reports that need to be given?
Could I report on, okay. So for curriculum and instruction, Board Member Hines and I met and with Dr. Winn and I just wanted to highlight something that is still in, in development, but I thought it was a great way, forward-thinking way to approach our, some of the gaps and address some of the gaps. Dr. Winn is proposing a virtual tutoring session. So how we have in-person tutors, she's also proposing virtual tutoring sessions for the evening and on the weekends for our students. And I thought that was just a really innovative way and forward-thinking way that she's proposing to address the student need and, and learning that, you know, pandemic has really, how, how pandemic has really impacted student learning and achievement. So I wanted to highlight that.
Good idea. Yes, great.
So as far as the legislative committee, I did attend the VSBA legislative conference in Richmond. And so there we learned about many of the different education legislation that's been introduced in the House and in the Senate, many of which I pray does not pass. But we did, we, we learned a lot. We also had a presentation by the new Secretary of Education. And so I ask that all constituents, all board members, please write your legislators to let them know your stance on these bills. We are fortunate enough to have a member of our general assembly who is the Chair of Education and Health here in the city of Portsmouth. And so right now, hopefully the Virginia Senate will be the firewall to stop some of these ludicrous education bills. And so please write your legislators and let them know your stances. And myself and Board Member Schumake, we've, you know, sharing legislation that's coming out and on social media. and on social media, through emails. And just please pay attention and let your voices be heard.
And with that.
I wanted him to add to find out who's on the education committee. And I have shared that, and I can reshare it again, but find out which legislators are on the education committee because a lot of the bills can die there. So you also need to not only contact your legislator, but the legislators that are on that committee.
And you all in a unique position to where you form relationships with school board members across the Commonwealth through VSBA. So many times, they don't know what bills are being presented. So you can contact your friends in the southwestern part of the state. They may be able to convince their legislator to do something different than what they're trying to do. So just make sure you utilize those relationships as well. And this is a legislative positions book that was put out by VSBA. You can look in this, and this is what I want us to formulate on behalf of our school board. Not as much and not as thick, but we need to start establishing our own set legislative priorities that benefit our school division and start presenting those to take to Richmond at the beginning of session. So it wouldn't be for this year, of course, but for the next session. So I would love for us to have our own position set up for that. All right, were there any other reports at all? All right. If there are no other reports, there are no other comments or remarks? Dr. Whitaker?
We haven't had an MWBE report for a while. I know, you know, during COVID, when the schools were closed, we weren't doing that much contracting. But I'd like to see it get inserted back into the agenda, that we have those quarterly reports.
Okay.
I haven't seen one in a while.
It's on the report tab, here with 3.4. But all you mean to have Ms. going to present, okay, I'm sorry. So we can get that.
Yeah, we'll find out when she's ready to come and do the next one.
One other thing. I know that we're planning to contract all of our mental health services, you know, down the pipeline. But I'm wondering, is there anything that we can do short-term given, you know, what happened, you know, in the last couple of weeks? There are a lot of students that are currently under a lot of stress and there's no kind of grief outlet. Services are difficult to obtain. And I think it would be, I think it's necessary for the school division to do something, you know, to address the needs of students and staff. This is a community that's experiencing a lot of trauma right now. And, you know, some services, they offer virtual counseling, which is, you know, easy to obtain if you have the resources to get it. So I don't know if we can use any of the COVID funding or what needs to be done, but we need something in place.
Yeah, those plans can be used for mental health resources. I guess Dr. Bracy, it may be on you, but maybe you can get with Dr. Sandlin and Dr. Shepherd pretty quickly and maybe bring us back something at a meeting on the 24th as far as what our options would be to have something immediately done until we're able to contract long-term. If that would be up to Dr. Whitaker.
Yeah, because I know there are a lot of agencies that will, you know, that can provide the services, but to get the numbers into people's hands so they can get appointments and get what they need in a relatively short period of time.
So if we have some on the 24th, what can we do with that?
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, and also with NWB, Dr. Whitaker, Vice Chair asking, are we inviting Ms. Dr. Perry Campbell to y'all meetings yet at all?
Not yet. I think her position is on a different line.
I just know when, I know she's going to have a report for her sometime in the future as well. But I know when it comes to the diversity and equity, it should flow from classroom to operational to, you know, especially purchasing and contracting as well. But that's about to open up for more contracted positions. I definitely want to make sure that she's involved and make sure that the students that need it, the services are being reached as well when it comes to contracting services.
Okay, from that aspect, I see.
Yeah. Just so she can put proper data together for us to make sure she makes her presentations well when it comes to contracting services.
Cool, okay.
Janari?
I recently spoke at the Chesapeake and, no, Chesapeake and Virginia School Meeting with their student rep in Norfolk regarding adding a student rep to their boards as well, along with Portsmouth, Hampton, Newport News. And Portsmouth, Hampton, Newport News in Norfolk.
Yeah, man, I saw that. And I was meant to send you a message. I want to thank you. You are showing great character and bravery with what you're doing. You go into places where you have opposition and you stand your ground, you state your facts. Oh, you state your facts and you represent us very, very well. And I just want to thank you for being a strong representation of our school division, of our students, and really of our state when it comes to board representatives. So thank you for everything you're doing. And I cite, you're still visiting schools too, but I'll let you make your report the next meeting on that. But you're doing a great job. Thank you. Okay, Ms. Thomas and Ms. Schumake.
Oh, you know what? I was going to point to Ms. Schumake anyway. We, because I forgot when I looked at the committee reports that we did have a CTE meeting and Board Member Schumake actually shared the CTE video to get the, one thing that we really discussed was getting the word out about what's available in terms of CTE programs. And I saw Board Member Schumake share that video. And Janari's name also came up in our meeting that we've asked our CTE committee to, you know, we've mentioned you, Janari, how you're really an advocate. You really make yourself known. The students trust you, they follow your social media. So, you know, to utilize, you know, our student rep to also, you know, engage students to get them excited about the CTE program. So I just wanted to mention that as well. And then I'll turn it over to Board Member Schumake for anything else that we discussed.
And on top of that, there's a pilot program that they want to begin. And it's kind of geared towards what you already do. And so, and Board Member Thomas said, well, we have one. And he goes around and he tries to encourage other localities to have a student rep. And so I want to get you in contact with this person because you would be the first with this pilot program. And you would be more than just a student rep, you would be an advocate, which is something that you already do. But it's going to be a different label. So I'll get with you after the meeting so that we can get that situated. Also, really quickly, I 100% agree with Dr. Whitaker. I know at the last meeting, I asked if we could have grief counselors. So if we could definitely look into that. And the only reason, I know everybody is probably being inundated with concerns, rightfully so. I recently got more concerns, questions from parents as well as students stating that they don't know who to talk to. And they're having some really internal issues. So if we could really try to get a grief counselor on site, I would love to have a number two, but if we could possibly have grief counselors on site, specifically at certain schools. And they could probably move around, but where the impact has actually happened with certain schools, I think that would be beneficial. Thank you, Chair.
All right, there are no other comments or concerns? Ms. Hines?
Newport, German.
I consider this meeting closed. Thank you all so much.